Good evening. We're going to call to order the Thursday, September 13th, meeting of the Northampton Planning Board. We are not live tonight, but we are being recorded for anybody who wants to go back and watch a recording of this meeting. We always open our meetings with public comment on items that are not on our agenda. So if anybody is here from the public and wishes to comment on something that is not part of this evening's agenda, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address and say your piece. And hearing no public comment, we'll go ahead and open our 7:00 PM hearing for site plan for a major project for Seven Sisters LLC to construct a new building at 74 Maple Street Florence, MAP ID 23A-34. Is there a presentation from the applicant?
Hi. My name's Ginny Miller. I'm a certified nurse midwife. I'm waiting for my business partner who's driving from Pittsfield, but she probably won't make it.
We can chip for a few if you like.
So we have bought a property in Florence, Center Florence, and plan to build a two-story building that involves a freestanding birth center and two apartments. We will be the first freestanding birth center in Massachusetts. There are two other birth centers that are hospital-owned on the east part of the state, but we'll be the first one that'll be recognized by DPH, which we're going through that process right now. So we have had, we have an architect, Rachel Stevens, from Maple Street Architects. We have a civil engineer, Jonathan Saruda, on the site plan, and a landscape planned on by Maggie Leonard and Selena Myers, I think is her last name. Those are all included in the plans. This is a rendering of what we hope it will look like. That's based on the planting plans and the site as it will sit. The building will be entered on the side. It will be on, right on the street, in Middle Street and Florence, Maple Street and Florence.
And can you talk a little bit about, in terms of the site design, there, I noticed in the application, there are some trees that'll come down. There's some tree replacement.
There's, um, there are four significant trees. There are, there's three significant trees. One is a hemlock that has been deemed unhealthy. There's a Norway maple, and then in the back, there's another maple. And we, we will try to keep the one in the back, but the other two, we will take down because they're right in the middle of where the parking lot will be. Along the side, along the alleyway, most of those trees are insignificant or dead, and dead.
And they're all leaning towards the parson's block on birds. In fact, one tree is leaning on the roof of birds. So there's no way that the trees along that side could be salvaged and still be able to fit everything else on the lot. And there's a good chance that, because the whole, on the, on the bird's side of the trees, it's all paved and, and concrete, and it's not a very happy section, so.
This is Jeffrey Bott.
I'm sorry.
The builder, project manager.
So we understand that there's 22 inches of replacement tree required and that you'll be planting 12 on site?
No, we'll be doing the, paying for them, or whatever the, the agreement is.
Right, because the, the trees that we'll put in the front will be much, you know, they're going to be two and a half inch trees, but there's only a couple of them. And I just figured it'd be better for the city to put them where they want them, so. But it's up here in the, in the back corner of this lot, there is one significant tree that will be saving. We've moved the parking lot around so that there's a cutout in it, and, and it will be able to be saved. The other significant tree is, the one in green up there is the one that will save. There's another one sort of halfway along the side, the right side of the lot, that is 20 inches, 19 and a half, 20 inches at four feet. But it's leaning towards birds, and it's got no, you know, the roots have been disturbed with their driveway. And on the other side, it's only going to be eight feet away from the building, which doesn't bode well for it. And, um, and that's, that's about it. Everything else is, uh, so our plan is to reforest the site with, with plantings that are more appropriate for the, for the lot.
Okay. And so just to clarify, the tree replacement, it's, I don't know if this is a question, Carolyn, for you or for the applicant, but of the inches that require replacement, your intention is to make a payment, or to actually, for all, okay, so the combination still of the 12 inches planted on site and then the value of 10 inches in payment? Okay.
So I have some questions about that issue, but we could probably wait till later, unless you want to go.
Well, I mean, you know, so in terms of the, the organization of our meetings, you know, we have a presentation from you all, and the board will ask you clarification questions and such, and then if, then we'll open it up for public comment if there are any comments from folks here. I think we're probably at a point where we can start kind of going around, you know, in the board and ask for some clarification on some things that were in the plans, if you want to take us off.
So I had a chance to go to the site today, and that, so my ideas, my understanding is other than the one marked in green, you're going to basically take out every tree on the lot. So I certainly don't agree about the hemlock tree. That's about 55 feet tall, not 40.
We've had, we've had two arborists who said that it's totally infested and it should come down.
All right. And there's a maple tree up near the corner on the bird's side.
We've had a landscape architect look at that and said, she said that once we took the trees around it, that the way the forking is in it, it will not be a good tree. It's been supported by the dead ones that are, that are around it. So her advice was, we were going to keep that, and her advice was to take it down.
Yeah. She also suggested that once we saw the other trees taken down around it, we'd realize just how marginal that tree was, so.
I mean, there's a possibility we could plan around it and keep it, but we've had a couple people say that it's not worth it.
There's another solid maple tree there that's growing up straight. It's about 10 inches in circumference, just down from the lot a little bit. That isn't being, roaching on the building or anything. So my concern is Florence Center just doesn't have a lot of trees. And what you're proposing here are very small trees that are going to top out at 15, 20 feet maybe. And you're only, you talked about reforesting the lot, but you're really putting in perennials and shrubs and not trees. So I just want to be able to look at that a little closer because, you know, unfortunately, at that, that corner building that went in where the old mobile station was, we weren't able to put any trees there. There's no streetscape trees in Florence. The ones that are have been dying kind of quickly, part of Florence Savings Bank. So it's an opportunity for us to either keep some of the trees or really make a concerted effort.
Well, I'd like to just, you know, in the front, if we plant these two river birches, I think that's what they are, real, those are going to grow up and be street, streetscape trees. There's also a big opportunity right across the street, and it's not our property, but, you know, where Coolidge, where the Valley Medical put in their parking lot and stuff. There's a lot of big open space there that could have trees planted on it. And it's just, you know, with, with complying with the stormwater requirements and the rain gardens and such, it'd be nice to put more big trees back there, but they're not appropriate for that kind of situation, so.
It's also, there's only about eight to 10 feet between the back of the building and that fence. And to then put in a building and a sidewalk, those trees are going to be, if that one tree we kept, it, that's going to be hazardous.
I mean, we, we could look at planting, you know, maples or whatever in, in the front of the building, something that, that could grow up into something significant at one point or another, but.
Well, we don't have to decide that now. If you're going to make a donation to the city, I'm sure there's some option within the planning department or staff that can decide about other trees that could go in there, rather than just shrubs and perennial daylilies for the rain garden, you know?
Well, the, the rain garden is designed, you know, the plantings for the rain garden have to be pretty specific, and DPW certainly made comments on the media that's, you know, put in. And I think the two river birch on the front, they definitely will be substantial and cre, and be spreading, and so create, you know, shade for the sidewalk and landscape improvement in front of the building. And I think that the offset for the plant, I mean, you know, what would happen is when someone pays money to the replacement fund, then DPW, the tree warden in particular determines where we have gaps. So those could get planted. They could be in Florence Center. They could be anywhere really in the city. So that could offset that piece of it. The tree warden did actually also confirm the diseased tree, the hemlock you referred to, and said that, you know, agreed, yes, that, that's, that needs to come down. And they didn't flag anything else except that they want a little bit of bolstered tree protection for that back tree. Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions and comments from the board?
Carolyn, is there any DPW comments?
Um, yes. And that I think many of them could be incorporated as conditions. They relate to the stormwater system, wanting prior to issuance of building permit to report and execute a stormwater operation and maintenance plan in accordance with what they submitted for maintenance, maintenance garden. And that, with final sign-off on that maintenance agreement by DPW, they want to see an additional tree protection detail to be revised that includes protective fencing at the drip line. And prior to construction, test pits, just to confirm that the soils are what are assumed for those rain gardens. And then modification of the rain gardens to incorporate a berm around the edge just to prevent this spill over or redirection of water. And there were some concerns about water connections, but I don't think they need be permit conditions because those are just sort of standard utility connection issues.
In terms of a water connection, it was unclear at the time that we were doing the drawings where exactly any of the utilities in the street are. I've since been told, the fire sprinkler people, that the fire line will need to be six inches. And from the letter from the DPW, it appears that, so the six-inch line will come into the property line from the street, and there'll be a branch off of that for an inch and a half water feed, and there'll be two shut-offs at the, at the property line for those two feeds. So those weren't, they were just shown generically on those plans, so that'll be updated. The sewer line was just that they wanted a TY or in the, in the existing 10-inch sewer line, and that we cannot, they don't want us to use the four-inch line that's there. They want us to put a new six-inch line in and bring it to the property line with the cleanout at the property line. So that's, that's all being updated, and as well as the berm on the rain gardens, the engineers clarifying that.
So would we condition, would we just add a condition to see those updated plans with utility connections, or?
Um, so, yeah. So DPW asked the project construction that final revised plans incorporating all the utility and stormwater, and, yeah, details for the tree protection be submitted.
Okay.
But that's not coming back before us.
Right, yes.
I don't, no, doesn't need to. Go ahead, George.
Just on the utilities, how will the electrical?
The electrical will be overhead to the side of the building. If you, if you look at, at the site, there are two huge electric poles right in front of the door. And it doesn't look like the electric company's got any plans to put anything underground, so.
So I would suggest in general, moving forward with new development, that power lines should be underground, even though it, it can be an upfront cost at times for the, depending upon how it's being done, but.
It's definitely taking a longer-term view.
I, I don't know if you did the numbers on that or talked to the power company about it.
I mean, there's still going to be a huge line in front.
Right. I mean, there's, the power company's not going to get rid of the line.
True. I know. They're still going to be up there, the power lines, and eventually maybe they'll go away. But throughout Florence Center, when they did other work, and all the new, they, everything went underground just to start kind of moving away from the overhead lines. It's, again, I, you know, I'm just putting it forward as a suggestion.
Yeah, no, I mean, we can't, we can't require it, but it's, it does make much more sense thinking long-term and in terms of sustainability and what we know about the dangers of overhead power lines and, you know, the risk with extreme weather, so it's.
Respectfully, if anything that, we're only 20 feet away from the power pole. If we, if we buried a line from that power pole, besides it being extremely unsightful, because if you look at the two power poles that are in front of this property right now, the one that's feeding the fire station has got six conduits coming down the side of it going into the ground. If it were something that the electric company was planning on burying those lines, then I would say, yes, it's very appropriate. But since there's no plan for doing that, I think asking to incur the additional expense.
Oh, yeah. No, we're certainly not, I mean, I think we're just having discussion and, you know, George raising a good point, but.
It would be something that I would love.
Yeah.
Because it would certainly clean up the front facade of this building.
Right.
And, but, you know, then you go down the street, Pivot Media, the house next door, and the, and the next building down all have overhead lines, so.
And it's a process. I mean, we know that downtown, they have been incrementally burying lines, and that's, you know, that, that's something that's, that's going to happen over a long period of time. So, so a couple of questions, you, you know, you mentioned the facade. Can you talk a little bit about the decision to, the way that you've oriented the building, where we're in the middle of, you know, downtown Florence, and there's a building with its back facing us, you know, where there isn't a front entry, that it's a very, you know, more kind of suburban design that's right kind of in the heart of Florence? So are there?
Well, part of the issue is, is what's going on in the building.
Yeah.
I mean, the, in the front of the building will be exam rooms, where there will be intimate exams.
Yeah.
The birth center is in the back, and we want to have people be able to come in privately and also be able to come in the back where, and there's also an access to an ambulance. So we think that it looks fairly nice to have trees and plantings and a nice sidewalk and an entrance to it, front, to the side.
Yeah.
And it will be, it is kind of a square box, but it will be, we will really work hard on making it look welcoming and.
Yeah. I mean, I don't mind the square box so much as, you know, just when we try to look at the nature of downtown and, and having access from the street and, you know, not walking past the sort of backside.
We're not having walk-in people. People are not going to be wandering down the street and walking in.
Right.
They will have specific appointments, and they will be coming in for, you know, specific things, so.
It's, I think my point is, it's a walking kind of location. You know, you've selected a site that is, you know, sort of wants that, and so it's an interesting choice. So that, so that's the, on the east elevation, there's, it's just the plantings. It's, that's what's, and a, and a wall-mounted sign, is that right? That's what it kind of looks like in the plan?
Yeah. And there may be window boxes and benches and, you know, different things as we move along, see how.
Are there any issues? I'm surprised that you can put a, like, living, living above a medical facility.
Yeah.
That's perfectly okay.
It's not, the. It's a, it's a neighborhood clinic facility. So there's no, in terms of, it's fight, the fire issue, fire stop.
Well, the building needs to be sprinkled, but the, the offices downstairs are, are use group, are business use group, and upstairs is residential three, R3. And the two are compatible, except that they trigger commercial-grade sprinklers, sprinkler system that's an R13, not an R13R.
But the clinic will be open 24/7 because women will spend the night there?
Women will not spend the night.
They will not spend the night there.
I hate evidence.
This is Kirsten, my partner.
Hi. Nice to meet you guys. I'm Kirsten McQuarz, and I'm a certified nurse midwife, and I'm the partner in this process, one of the partners. Yes, Jeff is also a partner in this process. So this is an out-of-hospital birth center. Women, it's a short-stay facility. So short-stay facilities are facilities where women come, have their babies, but they don't stay more than 12 hours postpartum. So they will, there will be people there at night, but it's not an overnight facility. That's standard to what the CABC and the Department of Public Health does in terms of their approvals of out-of-hospital birth centers. So if we have clients who need to stay or need care longer than 12 hours, our regulations would be that they would actually transfer to Coolidge Dickinson Hospital. So, and I worked for an out-of-hospital birth center in Danbury, Connecticut for three years, and that's exactly how, how we were designed. We're actually across the street from the hospital, independently owned. But, yeah, there won't be people there who will be staying for that long a period of time.
I know some exterior lighting, some wall sconces and so forth, and looks like bollards. I don't know if those are lit or not along the sidewalk, and no parking lot lighting. Can you just walk me through the exterior lighting?
The exterior lighting, you know, we were asked to keep all the lighting as minimal as possible. So there's lighting on both of the doors, in the front and in the back, and on the exit and down from the second floor. There are low-voltage pathway lights along the sidewalk that would guide your way all the way to the parking lot. And we felt that there really wasn't a need for any additional lighting in the parking lot itself. In fact, it was suggested that that would be definitely not, any outside lighting.
Are the, the exterior wall sconces, are those to be on 24/7 or, or come on with a photocell?
They'll come on with a photocell.
Because a lot of times.
We condition that typically.
Typically for commercial space, we'll say, for instance, if you close at 10 at night, then the lights will close one hour thereafter, instead of being on all night.
Right. They, they're not intended to be on all night. They are all on.
They're on a photocell, they'll be on all night.
Only when somebody walks by it.
Oh, oh.
Motion sensor.
Motion sensor, okay.
No, motion sensor, excuse me. And they're all very minimal downlights that are really supposed to be as unobtrusive as, as possible.
We should get a cut sheet of those fixtures.
It's on the, there's one on the plan.
Sorry. Oh, I got it. Yep.
Okay.
Mark, would you be interested in, in having us add a condition about motion sensor? You know, that lights be on, motion sensor sensors?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you could have, you could have a motion sensor with a timer, right? So that at 1:00 in the morning, if a cat goes by the back, the lights aren't going to come on. I don't know who they're going to bother if they do come on, but typically that's what we do in, in a commercial setting. So if you don't have any issue with that, I would.
No, there's, I don't have any issue with that.
I mean, in terms of the use, though, the facility is able to be accessed 24/7, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
So then, if it's, yeah, if it's 20, I mean.
Then we can override it. Can't you override if you're there?
Well, you can certainly override. You can just turn them on. But the point is, there's going to be staff that's going to be called in. Nobody's going to be there if nobody's in labor, but.
No, there are tenants upstairs who are coming at all-out hours.
And they'll, they'll be able to, you know, if they walk up, they'll trigger the motion sensor and the light will come on.
Right. I think what Mark is saying, that typically when we talk about that, we have the motion sensor, and there's a time of day at which that motion sensor doesn't, doesn't happen at all, because it's a, you know, a commercial area that, that there is like a period of darkness. So I guess the question is, for your usage, do you require that there be the possibility of motion-activated lighting around the building 24/7?
I think that would be the preference if we could, but obviously, you know, we can work with other things, but ideally.
Excuse me. It would only have to be on the front door where the tenants would come in. We will definitely not encourage the tenants to come in the back door. So the only door they'll be able to come in is the front entrance, and maybe.
So you could put it, I mean, just at that entrance. I'm unclear, I guess, if, so if it's 11:30 at night and, and a woman's in labor, will they come in the back door and be there for 12 hours and lights come on and the whole bit? Or after a certain hour, you go to the hospital? How does it work?
No, it's a 24/7 facility.
Yeah.
But the staff could.
Maybe at the entrances, you could have a.
The staff could override.
Or at the entrances, you could have a motion, and then on the, on the, on the sconces on the side of the building. Those would turn off at a certain time.
Right. And so we've, in the past, have said, you know, we've used the, the end time of the business, since this doesn't have one, we've also at other times used 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM, which, so it may seem reasonable to use that cutoff for the sconces. You know, 10:00 PM, for example, and, you know.
And then leave the motion active at the doors.
The doorway motion center lights. Are you amenable to that?
Yeah, that seems perfectly reasonable.
So the tenants don't need to have a light in parking lot when they drive in at 12:00 at night?
Typically, we're arguing for less lighting.
Right.
In the parking lot, not more lighting.
But we don't need any, doesn't need to be a motion sensor. And their smartphones, they can light up their walkway with their smartphone. Yeah?
It's a big park on the street. It's a big walk.
I mean, downtown Florence is pretty, has a lot of sort of ambient light at night anyway. If you've ever, having lived there for 18 years, you guys have lived there probably if you walked down the street in Florence at 2:00 in the morning, there's a lot of light, like, you know, the cumbees just cast something.
As an example.
Just cast a lovely green glow over all of the village.
Right. This is a back parking lot behind your building in the residential kind of setting. It doesn't have.
Well, there is, there are buildings back there. There's apartment buildings that have lighting up on large poles. The two apartment buildings back there, the houses that are apartments.
To clarify, Carolyn, to clarify with you, maybe for George and all of us, if there were going to be an amendment at some point, you know, if six months from now you decide that you need a whole new lighting scheme based on usage, would the applicant come back for an amendment to a lighting plan?
So if you put a condition that said you wanted the lights over the entries to be motion censored, but the other lights to be off at a certain hour, but, and they wanted to change that regularly, then yes, they would come back, they could come back for an amendment.
Okay.
What about if the pathway lightings were on more or less all the time or on a motion sensor? Because they're very low wattage and they're down low. They're only, you know, 16 inches off the ground. They're little mushrooms. And that, at least in my experience, completely lights the walkway so that if you parked your car in the back, you could see where the sidewalk is. It's not that big of a lot anyway, and be able to follow the path up to the front door. And you wouldn't even need particularly to have the light come on at the front door because there'd be a dim glow down by your feet, which, I mean, the woman who lives next door, she got them all over her yard, so.
I mean, I think that's fine. I think the issue is, you don't, you don't want a light that's on the second floor on the outside of the building shining in somebody's window at 2:00 in the morning or something like that.
We're not putting it.
So what you're suggesting, then, is just the building facade lights be on a timer to go off at what, I don't know what time you said.
11:00 PM.
Sure. 10, 10.
10:00 PM.
It is a business district.
11:00 PM. 10:30.
25.
Shouldn't be having babies after 10:00. Everyone knows.
You talk to those babies.
You talk to those babies.
So are you suggesting 11 because it's a business district?
Yeah.
Yeah.
11:00 PM.
That's true.
Is there a snow removal plan, or is there a thought about where it's going to go?
It'll, it'll be removed. We'll hire somebody to remove it.
Okay.
You okay, George?
Yeah. So that doesn't happen as a matter of course. What, you mean, they're going to come in and take out all the snow and put it in a dump truck?
Instead of pushing it into the garden, the rain garden.
Well, there's a sound.
On a certain accumulation.
So let's, yeah.
It depends on how much snow there is, I guess, is the issue.
The fact is, in the maintenance plan of the work, you should not be piling snow up in your rain garden.
Right.
So any snow that has to be cleared from the lot is, is going to have to be trucked away, over to my house, or something like that.
So is that a condition? I know it gets.
Well, I think the rain gardens shall be maintained in accordance with plans, that's where, that's where.
So that by default will take care of the snow?
Yeah, and they need the parking. I mean, I think that's pretty typical in a lot of projects that you look at, that if they have, if the applicant has to take it away, they have to take it away.
Then we're, we're back to that monitoring thing on the part of the city.
Right.
Over time, everybody just plows it into the rain garden during the winter, unfortunately.
But they are required annually to give reports about the maintenance of the rain garden. So if something happens and it's not being maintained, then that's the, that's the trigger for.
Yeah, I don't think it's appropriate for the board to get into that kind of micro detail about how often to shovel the walks and where, with the snow.
It's more about the stormwater issue, and that is our, yeah, so it's.
As long as they don't interfere with that, they can, they can plow as often as they like, it seems to me.
So that's assumed in that condition. You, any comments or questions? No. Sam, any other comments?
It's twenty-four seven, that's, it's not twelve hours, right? I mean, anytime the person arriving, then, on their own, maybe twenty-two hours, right?
Well, you have to take into consideration the amount of time the person, so, to give an example, someone comes, a, a staff person meets the person at the center, then there's time for assessment, time for labor, and time for having the baby, and then from the, from when the baby's born, then it's twelve hours from there. So it's very, you know, by quite a few hours. And we don't, so we're, part of being a short-stay facility and being a facility that only takes low-risk individuals, we don't, we don't admit women to the, to our facility. In early labor, they have to come when they're in like an active labor pattern. So we both work in hospitals, it's very different. You know, in a hospital, sometimes women will come in very, very early, they're for many, 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 many hours before they actually give birth, and then stay for two days. We're a very different model. The model is that people are outside of the facility until they're active. So the typical amount of time, in my experience, having worked in a facility like this for a number of years, is usually moms are there for somewhere from one to maybe six hours before having their baby, and then they, and then they are in the postpartum period after that. And the transfers, transfers are very low, very rare that you transfer to hospital.
So if someone needs a C-section.
They have to go to the hospital.
Go to the drive-through.
Right, so we, that's why we have to have an arrangement with Kool-Aid Dickinson, which we have, that they will accept our transfers.
And we have E M Ts that are eighty-nine feet away.
Which is really, short of having our own private ambulance, we basically have the next best thing.
Well, let's open it up for public comment. If there is anybody in the public who would like to make a comment or ask a question about this project, please come to the podium. Please state your name and address, and don't be shy.
My name's Anne Wassell. I live at thirty-two Pine Street in Florence. And I would like to speak to two aspects to this. One is that I am a retired O B. nurse, and basically worked in labor and delivery for thirty-two years, and know that there are many, many women in great need for options in terms of birthing. And I think having a freestanding birth center in Florence in particular, in Northampton, is a real feather in our cap. And I know that it will be a desired birth center. The other thing I'd like to speak to is that I've known Jeffrey Bott for many years, and I know him as a contractor and as a landlord, and that he is really meticulous in what he does and follows up on, and I would have aptly no qualms about him being in charge of building what I'm sure will be a really lovely facility.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on this project?
I was told that there was a birth center in the thirties, right around the corner from the Toasted Owl, or whatever it's called now, where a friend of mine said both his uncle, aunt and uncle were born there.
It was the Florence Line Inn.
Yeah, the Florence Line Inn. We haven't been able to, to verify that yet, but that's, that's the history.
Hi, my name's Rachel Stevens. I'm, I'm thirty-nine Revel Ave. in Northampton, and as Ginny mentioned, I'm also one of the architects on the project. And I am mostly involved in this project because I, I do think it's a very exciting thing to have in our area, and I'm very hopeful that all will come through quickly and, and provide this wonderful service for families in this area and in the surrounding towns. And I also want to say that it's been a real pleasure working on this team, that it's been a very collaborative effort, and all of the team players have really joined in and made improvements to the project, including the landscape architect and the civil engineer, and it's been great to have the builder working so collaboratively with all of the different players from the beginning.
Thank you.
Move the closed public comment.
Second.
Second, Alan, Sam.
So does, then that means we can't ask the developers any questions?
It does. Would you like to reopen public comment?
Well, we didn't vote.
Yes, good, sorry.
So I, I just have a couple more questions. So if you don't mind, can we hold it just for a few minutes? Great.
Do you want to rescind your motion?
Rescind it, yeah.
So could you talk to me just a little bit about the fire escape on the side? We can't see it in that elevation.
No, it's not in that elevation.
It's here.
Right.
And that's just, are the tenants going to use that to enter also?
No. No, they're not. They'll use the, as little as possible. It's required a second exit from the second floor. I mean, the windows are egress as well, but we need a second exit. It's, we'll have panic hardware on it that will enable them to go out, but not come back in. The front door, on the other hand, will also have panic hardware, but it'll have a keypad that'll allow them to go through it. So the tenants, I mean, and the other thing we did is we, the stairway exits to the front, to the street side, instead of back to the parking lot, so it's less likely that they're going to run down the back stairs to get to their car. The front stairs, both of their doors on the second floor are oriented towards the stairs going down. That'll be a, a very, you know, that's, that's, you know, we need to have it there.
Yep.
And we didn't want, it's, you know, it's only going to be a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom apartment. It's going to be relatively small spaces, but we want to add some housing to downtown. So that's, that's the way that works.
Okay. Thanks. And, and I don't know what the threshold is when we have a parking lot in a commercial area, whether we stripe it for pedestrians, the, coming from the cars to the, to the building. Do we have a threshold there, or is it all common sense? There's, I'm wondering, just because the driveway curves around, and if you have, I don't know how much pedestrian activity they're going to have, but the striping often just alerts a driver that whoops, could be somebody walking out the back door.
Yeah, I don't, there's not, there's not a size necessarily, this is a pretty small lot, so, you know, I think, I certainly didn't flag it just because it's small and close to the building.
Yep.
But if you think it's appropriate.
I, I just noticed that it wasn't a plan, and only if the other board members also feel that it's, you know, appropriate.
I think it's a good point to raise. I don't know that we need to condition it necessarily. I mean, it may be something that, as the applicant's listening, you know, that you may make a note of that when you're hiring somebody to do the striping and think about adding in.
Yeah, I mean, we designed the sidewalk to curve around the building so that, you know, it would be out of the traffic pot, pattern, you know? So if you did come in walking, you came in off the street, you'd go in. If you're back here.
But we just heard nobody's going to come in off the street. They're really going to come from the parking lot.
But depends. They're going to come this way a lot, by bicycle. Can't see it here. I mean, that's, that's what I'm pushing for.
Yep.
We got, even if, you know, we could put one of these electric things in front there, it would get in the works. But, yeah, I mean, we could put some striping in front, you know? If you, if we did a hash, you know, something there to alert people that.
Let the market, let the market control that thing. Let's move forward.
I don't think we should condition.
But I'm, yeah, I'm glad that George raised it. It gives the applicant something else to think about. I'm all over. They're on discretion. Can we go back to the facade again, just very quickly? So in general business, buildings should face the sidewalk. Is that a requirement? Like, was there zoning relief, or is it?
There's no requirement.
No requirement, okay. So it's just a suggestion?
Yeah, it's more about in keeping with the downtown character, as opposed to a specific requirement.
Okay.
In fact, we, you know, you guys got notice of this forum for both downtown and Florence Center about design, and so I think if, you know, there are no design requirements now for Florence Center, but this may be something that the board and the community think about in the future, about those buildings that are in Florence Center.
Right. Okay.
It's sort of like that Cumberland Farms. It doesn't enter off the street. The front of it is in front of the gas pumps on the side.
Slightly different use, but yes, your point is well taken.
Quick in, quick out, same thing.
Right, exactly. To review the conditions that we've discussed, conditions that were previously documented by D P. W. and planning.
Appropriate, should we close the public area?
We can, I mean, I was just going to recap the conditions. We could have a motion if someone would like to make it.
Keep it open while we read the conditions.
Yeah. Prior to start of construction, tree protection measures installed for the tree to be saved in the northwest corner of the site. Tree fencing shall be chain-linked at the drip line. Tree protection shall be inspected by the city. Second condition, prior to construction, all stormwater maintenance agreements shall be submitted for review and approval by the city and recorded. Prior to final C O., a final calculation for tree replacement based on trees planted shall be submitted, and replacement shall be completed in compliance with our zoning. Fourth, rain gardens shall be maintained in accordance with plans. Test pits at the rain garden provided to D P. W., right?
Prior to construction.
Prior to construction, and that a berm be constructed around the rain garden, is that right?
Right, with revised plans submitted, showing that.
Showing revised, showing that on revised plans, and that the updated plan showing utility connections is provided. And then lastly, that lighting on the building shall be on a timer that goes off at eleven P M., and then motion sensors be used on lighting that's along the pathways and the doorway entrances. Does anybody have anything else?
Well, I would like to suggest that the, the electrical service be underground rather than overhead, as a condition, but.
I'm actually against that. It's not, it's not our place to, to push that, especially if the city is, especially if the electrical company is not, is not doing that work. That's a massive cost to the developer. It doesn't make any sense.
So I, I think differ, but it is our place to suggest conditions like that.
Yeah, but we want to be business-friendly, and this is a wonderful business coming to our town.
There's no doubt about it, but it's the only chance we have to suggest something like that.
Well, we can recommend, and if they want to do it, they can, but we don't need to put anything in writing that asks them to do that. That is not business-friendly. That's not why I'm on this board.
And George, when you say suggest, what do you mean?
I didn't say suggest.
I'm sorry.
No, I, I said.
You did, yeah.
I suggested it as a condition.
All right, you're suggesting that we have it as a condition.
Right.
Yeah, I'd be opposed to that also. I don't think it's appropriate, and I don't think we've imposed it on any other developments. I don't see any reason to do it here. In an ideal world, all electrical wires would be underground, but that's not the world we have. I'm, I would not be in favor of it.
I definitely, I mean, I agree, George, with you. I, I think that it's something that we should probably, especially in those design forums, and especially in the upcoming meetings, take it up at a, at a higher level for the usual application. I think we probably, if we were to condition it, I, I would imagine an applicant who had a condition like that might push back against that for, you know, for being the first applicant to have that condition. But I, I actually kind of disagree with you guys, and I think it is something that, in terms of thinking about, you know, both sustainability and design, it's something that we can have the conversation about in terms of new development or new design requirements.
It doesn't seem sustainable.
Well, sustainable when there's extreme weather and power lines come down. I mean, it's, it's investing in resilience for climate change, and we know that that's happening. When the October storm happened a few years ago, it was devastating to the businesses because we couldn't maintain power. So it's something, a conversation we should have outside of an applications hearing.
I agree conceptually, but I don't, I think we need a mechanism with which to hang our hat on, and that doesn't exist right now.
Right. I think that's, yeah.
And just to, I think to follow up on what Tess is suggesting, it makes, Central Business District is the only district where we require power lines to be underground, and that's because the city's in a whole effort with natural grid to bury the, the street lines, for the most part, a main street in there. But it does make sense, I think, to raise that in this sort of broader discussion about in the design forum, and sort of what do we want the public realm to look like, and is it appropriate then to expand upon that on the private side of the public realm?
The whole village and Hospital Hill is underground utilities.
That's, that's different, too, because it was a new subdivision built, and that's required of new subdivisions.
So there is precedent, new subdivision, okay.
Yeah.
So I don't want to belabor the point, you know, and I noticed that there are utility gas cans outside two canisters, which are probably going to be hidden underneath the fire escape, so.
Until the gas company decides to. Lift the more dark, I'd guess.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
Second, Alan. All those in favor? Those opposed? Do we have another motion?
I will make a motion to approve the site plan for major project for Seven Sisters Land L L. C. to construct a new building, five thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet, for a birth center and two apartments at seventy-four Maple Street, Florence, map I D. twenty-three A dash three four, with the conditions noted.
Motion by Mark is second.
Second.
Second by Alan. All those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
You can just go ahead and slide to it. I'm trying to.
Sorry for being so sniffy.
That's horrifying. That's horrifying, I'm saying.
I literally had a massive piece of concrete in my face. Worst part is I was using a jackhammer, no problem, and then I hit a rock. Thank you. I was like, I was like, the weirdest part about it is, I mean, I, because I was like, I just bought some new, I, well, I'm not getting, the first time I've used a Trulix industrial, like, jackhammer, like, you know, like, different.
Hello.
Actually scared me. Like, I wasn't going to let my guys do that, I was like, this one, I have to imagine this was the third one, you have to imagine that now, there must be some sort of safety on it, because this thing, like, if you just literally pull the trigger, it'll go. Drop the thing back, and then hit the trigger, and the thing like, right, right through my legs, and I was like, oh my God.
Okay, good to see you again.
I'm here for North Hampton Area Pediatrics. My company is T. Reynolds Engineering of Florence. And so, I'm here because North Hampton Area would like to expand their parking. And so, what they're proposing is, is an 11-space parking lot expansion that includes a retaining wall, fence, and a guardrail along with that. And they're proposing a 300, and I believe it's a 95-square-foot addition in the back of the building. And this is a major site plan approval because of the parking lot. And as such, it requires stormwater management. The area where it's being proposed is currently wooded, and all the vegetation is under 20 inches, so we're not proposing to do any tree replacement per se. However, this site does, does end up needing some enhancements, and there are tree plantings proposed, which I can talk about in a moment. And additionally, there is a stormwater management system, some concerns where the height of this wall, the wall's been limited to four feet in height throughout, and it's basically a gravity block wall. So, basically, what's happening is there's an existing parking out front here that is non-conforming, and it's over. It's into the right of way. So, we've pushed the parking back so that it is now at the property line. And previous to coming here, we were ZBA addressing that nonconformity. So, we've dealt with that. So, basically, just trying to clean it up and proposing the parking along the eastern edge next to the small engine repair shop with the wall and a decorative sign on it. So, as part of it, we're doing, I'm doing stormwater management. So, there's a small stormwater management system located over here near the northeast portion of the parking lot. It's a small water quality unit called subsurface detention infiltration system with an outlet control, and then a discharge at the existing location where there is currently a paved swale going down. So, it's fairly, fairly basic, nothing too complicated. There is, oh, this, I'm sorry, this is the incorrect planting plan. There's actually another tree added right over here. But, and, you guys have an updated plan.
Where did you say the other?
We've got the right.
Oh, we have the...
Yeah.
Okay. I see the difference.
So, basically, the front banks are gonna be replanted. There are some site concerns that have been ongoing for the facility at the driveway. So, they're replanting that to lower the vegetation going, looking east down Locust Street. And then, the trees that are being proposed are tulip trees that have a high foliage canopy area to also help prevent, you know, blockage of that. In addition, this is, this is gonna go to Conservation Commission because we end up being a buffer zone project. So, in this area back here, this is all invasive's removal to remove knotweed and other such things in that area. So, that's it in a nutshell, and I'll just...
Can you talk about the addition? Do you have anything else?
The addition is, I, you guys have the elevation. I don't have that on the screen here. It's a very small, no, no, that's an example of the fence.
Okay.
That's some addition.
It should be in the submittal. It's not, not in that set. It should be separate, hopefully.
Yes, we did have, is, so that wasn't referenced in the original application? Is that, does it need to be separate? It's like, the application only discussed the parking lot?
Yeah, so that's the trigger for the site plan, is the additional parking. So, the 350-square-feet of addition is not big enough to be...
So, it's not even under purview to do a site plan on it? It's just something else you're doing? Okay.
Right.
Say it come in for 350-square-feet and no parking changes?
There would be nothing.
I do have an elevation I could provide for...
No, no, we, yes, we have it. I just didn't know if you had anything you wanted to say about the addition.
Yeah. It's a very small addition.
Yeah.
It's, you know, unfortunately, by doing it, they're triggering the sprinkler system in the building. It's not gonna happen right away.
Yeah.
The main reason for this is there's a real need for additional parking for staff and so on. So, the parking lot is really what they're, they're looking for, trying to clean up the function of the site.
Yeah. Technical questions?
Did I understand correctly? So, DPW signed off, but ComCom has not yet?
No, we go to ComCom in a couple of weeks.
So, we would include a condition that the, based on, you know, approval by Conservation Commission?
No, you don't need a condition for that. They need to go to Conservation Commission.
Anyway.
Yeah, the only, the only comment really that DPW made was that they want to make sure that the detailed plans show clean fill to be replaced around the retention system. But that's, the Conservation Commission is also gonna be looking at the stormwater, actually, only really gonna be looking at the stormwater system anyway.
Okay.
There was an issue when we did the test pits, discovered debris, bricks and such where the system's gonna go. So, I actually did add a spec for fill to be replaced in there, which we'll address that.
Any technical questions from the board?
So, where the new parking lots, the new parking, those spaces, that's totally gonna be clear cut there? So, there won't be anything between a butter and...
No, the wall is right up to the line. And we have spoken with Buster Sminski, who's the owner over there, and given him, you know, these pictures of what it's gonna look like and that sort of thing. And in general, it'd be a big improvement. They, the fellow who rents the place currently is very concerned about trees coming down on the building and the shading that is causing issues for his facility.
There's a theme I'm hearing here, that trees are bad.
Well, these trees, these trees are not ideal. There are a lot of locusts, and they're, they're weak. Now, they are at that point where they're potentially gonna come down.
I see that in the, on the spec sheet, currently, there's 36% of the parcel is open space, which is really surprising. And down, and now it's gonna go down to 31%. Is that because the lot goes all the way down to the, I don't quite see. Have all you folks been there and walked around the building? It's all parking lot, and it's all roof.
Yeah.
I don't know. A third of it is open space?
Well, they have, they have some open space in courtyard area. They have open space all the way around the perimeter, and there's open space over in this area here too. But that's, that's what it calculated out to be.
Is that a calculation that DPW double checks, or is it...
No, it's to the applicant to provide accurate information.
Yeah.
Is there any lighting or anything associated with parking?
There's no new lighting. The lighting is just on the building.
Yep.
If there's no other technical questions from the board, we'll open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public have a comment on this particular hearing? Please come to the podium, state your name and address. And don't be shy. If there's none, board can continue to have discussion. There are just the two conditions that were suggested by staff, which is that any, any new lighting, and we understand that there shouldn't be any new lighting, but that any new lighting meets zoning requirements, and that any other conditions based on DPW comments, specifically clean fill replacing the area around the retention system. Anything else anyone has heard or would like to...
Well, just to stay on that topic of electricity, how's the utilities gonna be handled? Because right now, the power lines go right through that space.
Right. So, the utilities are gonna be buried, so...
Great.
The, I'm gonna need to relocate the telephone pole to right here, and then it's gonna be buried coming across the parking lot.
I think we should require that they be above ground.
Oh, okay. Do you want the conduit above the ground?
Yeah, right.
100%.
Anything else? No? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close.
Sam, second?
Second.
Second. Yuri? And another motion?
I motion to approve, where is it? Site plan, special permit for 227 South Street, North Hampton.
Fill one up.
MAP ID, 193 Locust Street, Florence, MAP ID 23B-1197, with the two, with accepting, what was it? The two things. Any new lighting shall meet the zoning requirements, and any other conditions may be appropriate based on the Department of Public Works comments.
Second?
Second.
Mark? All those in favor? Sam, are you in favor?
Yeah.
As opposed?
Thank you.
Motion approved. Thank you. Great. Thank you.
It's crazy to have 320-foot addition is gonna trigger sprinkler...
Yeah, no kidding.
I can't put it on the computer right now because it's on this, it's actually, well, actually, you know what? I might be able to get to it.
No, it's just, I just wanted to say that, it's 'cause I just...
I thought I told you, do a presentation.
Right. If it's, for such a small...
We do have a 7:45 hearing, but we're gonna pause for a little bit of technical, technical work, so sit tight.
Larger fraction than that. They just have to do a new thing, which is still expensive.
Yeah.
It's actually, someone made this really interesting comment.
Okay.
One of the features of this process, it's like...
My hair.
It's an inspector.
Very short, huh?
Very short head.
No.
It's gonna grow out.
Yeah. In his mind, sprinklers, all this sprinkler stuff, like, industry's really good at pushing it.
Right, right.
It sounds like it, but the real thing is just doors. And he, and he like went through, and he was like, went through this whole thing of...
Either way, in order to get it to this...
Rhode Island, that concert. And it was like, all of those people died, it was all caused by door problems.
Like, the doors swung in.
They swung in, they were like, and it sounds like it was some Rhode Island function going, because it was, because it was like, those same doors had been like taken out, right before the inspector came, or inspector says something, they took them out, and they put them back in.
Somewhere like...
Yeah, it was, and it just, and it was just like, the sprinkler systems wouldn't have solved the issue, but if they just had had doors, more doors, and doors that are opened correctly, like, everyone would be okay. And it turns out, like, the sprinkler, the alarm sound system, like, that's all connected to this, was just really fascinating, because it was like, that was one thing they had to have, it's just codes. They had this thing, because they couldn't fake that.
Right.
And, but, it was a noise that happened, and no one heard, because it was a concert.
Or it was loud, yeah, yeah.
Or someone just sort of thought it was part of the, the concert.
Right, right.
It was really, really fascinating. I'm not sure where she goes. Were your kids, were you out of the hospital that fast?
No. So, I can't imagine that. I'm gonna make a point to tell my wife.
Yeah.
You stayed 18 hours too long.
Yeah.
The average, the average six hours, that's crazy.
Yeah, I think that, one of the problems is, I think they conflate the application, they conflate national statistics with, and not Massachusetts statistics. You know, like, if you, if you start, like, comparing ourselves to Mississippi.
So, Tess, who went into your space on Pleasant?
A laser tattoo removal company.
What is this?
Laser tattoo removal.
In Lucky's?
No, disappearing ink from East Hampton.
Okay.
Moved into my own Pleasant Street storefront.
Okay.
And reconfigured it.
Smart. I've always thought it'd be a great business to have that on a truck, so you could just, like, pull up to someone's house.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know?
Mobile laser tattoo.
Mobile...
Pull in one end, come out the other.
Exactly.
That's very Jessens, right? Walk in, and I like that.
Going through the car wash.
You should have a next to...
Yes, I'm sorry for being so snarky on that first one.
Did you have a bad day?
I did have a bad day. I had some concrete hit me in my head.
Oh.
Yeah. But I survived.
Sorry, Sam. You're not concussed.
One comment about the pedestrian crosswalk. You said, "Let the market..."
So, in other words...
If somebody gets, a pedestrian gets hit?
There it is.
I didn't say the market.
I did.
Sam, Sam.
Well, but, yeah, I just don't think...
I'm saying, I'm not, of course, I didn't mean it like that. I just said...
If you walk, if you go to a lot of parking spaces, a lot of parking lots in town, and your eyes are open to that, you'll see there's all these conflicts with pedestrians. So, just by providing that little bit of striping, often it makes a driver just kind of slow down and alert.
Yes, well, totally.
There's two places here where we don't provide any kind of allowance for pedestrian or bicyclists to conduct...
Yeah.
When we get into designing parking spaces, you know, where do you put the hatching?
But like on King Street with the new, like where Greenfield Bank is?
Yeah.
We've got, King Street corridor, these tent is, you can ride your bike or walk, turn into the development, and there's a, there's an alleyway, essentially up the gut, where you can safely get from the street to the building without fear of getting hit, other than there's a couple spots where it's clearly residential crossing.
Right.
But in a parking lot that small, I don't know how...
Right. That's why I... Other than the striping, I don't qualify it as such, but it was gonna be a...
It's good, it's good for people to think about, you know, again, like, complete streets mindset of, it's not only vehicles that are using this space.
And, and Alan, you'd be surprised sometimes when parking lots are pitched to us, that they, are pitched, are pitched to us, they haven't been really vetted, and there'll be conflicts with cars backing up into each other and not enough room, so...
Well, that, that is a...
That does happen sometimes, because DPW doesn't look at that.
Right.
Maybe Carolyn should, but she's looking at all these bigger things. So, sometimes, I think it's our, our burden to kind of even look at little stuff like that to make sure that there aren't those conflicts happening. Like, you know, it's, it's...
Sure, I mean, if they comply with the requirements and the ordinance, as far as size of spaces and distance between spaces, I...
But if it's a special permit, that's another, you know, there's a difference between our responsibility if it's a site plan versus a special permit.
And, and often, they, the people who draft these plans, they'll make mistakes sometimes. Not often, but they will, you know, and...
I just wouldn't like to see us getting into designing parking places, parking lots.
No, I don't wanna get into that either, but...
Where do you put the striping? How should it be arranged? Other than the striping, I don't qualify it as such, but it was going to be.
It's good for people to think about, you know, again, like, complete streets mindset of, it's not only vehicles that are using this space.
And Alan, you'd be surprised sometimes when parking lots are pitched to us, that they are pitched, are pitched to us, they haven't been really vetted, and there'll be conflicts with cars backing up into each other, and not enough room, so.
Well, that is a.
That does happen sometimes, because DPW doesn't look at that.
Right.
Maybe Carolyn should, but she's looking at all these bigger things. So, sometimes I think it's our burden to kind of even look at little stuff like that to make sure that there aren't those conflicts happening. Like, you know, it's. Sure, I mean, if they comply with the requirements and the ordinance, as far as size of spaces and distance between spaces.
But if it's a special permit, that's another, you know, there's a difference between our responsibility if it's a site plan versus a special permit.
And often, they, the people who draft these plans, they'll make mistakes sometimes. Not often, but they will, you know, and. I just wouldn't like to see us getting into designing parking places, parking lots. No, I don't want to get into that either, but. Where do you put the striping? How should it be arranged? I think we have to, my feeling is, we have to leave it to the applicants to do something that's rational, protective of the people that use it.
There is a middle round to design guidelines, like, we have design guidelines that aren't requirements, but there's, they're sort of like a best practices roadmap, like, that's, but that's a mechanism that we have to kind of get people thinking about things without making it a legal requirement, but at least documenting.
Are there design guidelines?
Well, for facade construction, for example, you know, like, I'm saying, it would be an interesting project to produce design guidelines for parking lots in North Hampton, and then someone has a manual that says, oh, they've taken the time to look at some other cities and towns, this, these are things that improve safety, take or leave.
They don't exist at present, do they? I'm not aware.
Not for parking lots, not for parking lots, but they exist here for facade, for building design, they exist.
Just downtown, though.
Right, right. I'm just using that as an analog, we could take on the task of kind of putting together a short manual on design guidelines for parking lots, you know, without making that a legal requirement, just giving it as a tool to applicants who are doing a development, to actually be able to leverage some of the better things that we know are going on.
Those guidelines do exist for King Street, is that highway business probably, that those are part of your.
Right.
How do they decide the size of, like, you know, like, if you go into Walmart, it seems like the spaces, the parking spaces are larger than, like, if you go into a tiny.
People are fatter.
Well, that's, that's fine, I'm fatter, so it's like.
You're being recorded, Alan, just to remind you. You're recorded.
I just wonder, like, I mean, I, you know, with this house that I'm doing, they built this medical facility right down the street, and clearly, and they got all these parking spaces in it, but I know, anecdotally, that people don't like parking there, because it's really hard to.
I think that's the marketplace, part of Walmart does, yeah, I've noticed, some places, you feel like you can open your door without.
Ranging someone else's.
Can't reconnect to that.
I think they have to be at least 18 lawn by, I don't know if it's eight feet wide.
I think it's, yeah, eight or nine, or, yeah, I mean, Astro has.
Then it might meet the standards, but functionally, you can't open your door without smacking the door.
Get a smaller car.
Between.
That's the answer, right? Smaller car.
Right, right.
Well, you know, that's a wonderful idea until, you know, you're a contractor like myself who needs a big truck.
Yeah.
You know, it turns out, it turns out you can't carry a two bike on a bike.
Tell you what, I can fit in my Scion XA, you'd be amazed. Thanks for your patience, folks.
I'm sitting impatient.
Thank you for your patience, Alan.
Imagine bringing a sheet of sheet rock on a.
That'd be hilarious, if you were the bike contractor, you would get so much good press, like the bakery on a bike. Yeah, exactly, that's what I mean, and if you were like the contractor on a bike, that would be amazing.
You'd just be really sloped. I know it's taking a while, man.
I'm in the easiest gear.
But I'm, but my carbon footprint is really small, I know you can't use the bathroom.
Is this the laptop you usually use?
Yeah.
You have to make this motion out. This is all my agenda.
Are you going to kick this to the other side of the table?
I'm done tonight.
You've got to make a motion.
I demand.
Really?
That's the one thing I miss.
Really?
Yeah.
I find the pedal people mean something.
But I can't, yeah, I can't do it.
I find this is not sustainable.
Like a rainy winter, like, early winter rain, where it's just, you know, it's like slushy rain sideways, rainy way, kind of like puddles, you know, 60 degrees uphill.
I guess, in my mind, that's not the definition.
Well, exactly, just want to make sure.
Like, sustainability is something that's like, how am I going to sustain, and I'm all for supporting that, but I'm like, cutting grass with a scythe. I'm like, this is, this is so intimidating to me, I'm actually doing work, and like, are you making, are you judgmental, because I'm cutting grass?
You have to plug in your, you know, skill saw.
Yeah, exactly. You know, like, maybe we should take it to the extreme, but, you know.
Georgia had a nice conversation yesterday with Chris.
Oh, Chris, yep, yep.
He's in the drawer.
You guys are old buddies.
I actually remember seeing, I was in, and I was watching this guy.
So, partner Mark, I was my practical advisor.
Oh, in planning, urban, yes, wow.
Yeah, exactly. So, many years ago, we all.
It's like something.
Nice.
My house.
She wanted to.
I got it.
About FPT stuff, and.
Yep.
Picture, yeah, so, yeah, we had a conversation.
Nice, right, right. So, are you in that business now? In the urban planning industry?
So, I worked for transportation.
Ten here.
Cambridge, I used to be a community planner, full-time for, I actually took a lot of time off, I went back, part-time, in my old, my first career before that school, was in communications, Sunray, so I do the patients for this transportation agency, part-time, and then still have the other part, so I did be have full-time for six years, or five years. And, yeah, so I still do that, and then I do various other things. Good evening, folks, we're ready to start the 7:45 PM hearing for a special permit and a site plan at 227 South Street in North Hampton, map ID 38B-73, and we have a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening, folks, my name is Jeff Penn, I'm from Huntington, I'm a architect. We have our owners here tonight, too, Daniel and Denise McCon. So, I don't know how familiar you all are, but on 227 South Street is one of the residential buildings along South Street, and it, most recently was the veterinary clinic, and it's two doors down from Lathrop Home, on the same side of the street. So, our intention in this project is, we're going to demolish the rear portion of the building, which had been constructed as a veterinary clinic, in brick, we're going to reconstruct in wood, and we're going to, the building formerly was the veterinary clinic with one apartment above, and we're going to reconstruct this building to have eight residences, there'll be five townhomes and three residences within the original building. We're going to not restore, but at least refurbish and make attractive, 1800s building on the street front. And we're going to articulate, as you see in the rear, we're stepping the apartments back, but we're also creating on the left-hand side, which you'd be able to see from your elevations, porches, it's going to be very important to us to give outdoor space and some liveliness to the occupants, and so, the building, each apartment will have a porch, which also serves as its cover for the stoop. The two, the three apartments at the front of the building will also have porches, except that, the front portion of the building, about where I'm putting this line across here, is where the building becomes two stories, and the area in front of that, towards the street, we're going to remove the roof and replace it with a large deck. So, again, we're trying to enliven the space and make it a lot nicer and more attractive, both for the occupants and for the local residents. As you see, the parking area, we've actually reduced the amount of impervious surface, where the cursor is here on the left, currently is all paved and it would become grass, as is the same on this right-hand side. Two modifications from this proposal, if you have read it in detail, the, on the right-hand side, we had shown temporary snow access parking, we thought that that was a good idea, it is not a good idea. We're going to be reducing curb cuts to one on this site. We will place it with a mountable curb, so that, we haven't determined from the fire department what proper height, but they believe that they can get up six inches, so we'll just find an appropriate height that the fire department wants, because they want to be able to park a vehicle, so we're going to keep our fences back, so that they can park a vehicle all the way to this location. So, during construction, we are going to, one of the measures we are going to take is we're going to protect the trees, there are two city trees right here in the grass verge, and two very large trees, one being a Norway maple and one being a Cataupla, at the front of the building. We will have to limb, we had a forester out who looked at the, an arborist who looked at the trees, we will have to limb them a bit, but they're very healthy trees, and so we will be able to make them last a lot longer. What else? So, in terms of impervious site, our water calculations were not full stormwater management calculations, but they do show that we're reducing the amount of impervious surface and taking care of all of the water on site. In terms of our lighting, one little thing that didn't get resolved prior to tonight is that in the plan that you have seen, they located all of the lighting on the building to illuminate the parking lot, and we're not as happy with that, for two reasons. One, and Carolyn reported back to us how there was too high of an intensity of light on the buildings, and we agree, we also would rather not have much intensity of light at the buildings at all, we don't want to disturb people's sleep. So, right now, we've asked our electrical designer to go back to his tech, and we're looking at low bollards over along this property line, that could be directional just to the parking lot, augmented by lower light fixtures along the building. We have, with the balconies that we're producing, we will have an area that we can actually put the light fixtures, so that they will be shrouded to the residents, but illuminate the parking. The other thing that is an unknown at this moment, although we did hear back from Dave Velaeta, that there is enough capacity so that we will be able to upgrade our water, we don't know exactly what it will be yet, but we're assuming it's going to be in the neighborhood of a two-inch line that will be necessary, and we know that that will be acceptable. The fire suppression system hasn't been designed yet, that's why we don't know our full loading, but we're out with Hampshire Fire, and we may go to New England Fire as well, with this design. Currently, because of all of the paving, there's something ridiculous, like 20-some-odd parking spaces on the site. By zoning, we should have 11 spaces, and we're going to provide 13. There are also, I believe, three striped spaces in front on street parking. We will be doing a little bit of buffering to our neighbor, there's a small-scale neighbor to the right-hand side of this building, and we're going to put some planters, currently it's just grass directly over to their property, and in the back, there are some lilacs, lilacs that do screening, and we're going to maintain and, maintain and improve those, and then these planter boxes are going to give opportunity for the individual tenants to control what they're planting. They're also going to have access to a private yard, that will give each person their ability to have their own garden, anything that they'd like to set up. So, again, we expect there to be some variety in appearance. I'm trying to think of anything else that might be particularly, I'll go through the quick structures that we are adding, we're going to add over here, we're adding a trash enclosure, so that we can close it and keep the trash. Bicycle parking is going to be on these front porches, but we've designed them in such a way that there's actually a zone outside, even though they're going to be at-grade porches, there's, we have the ability to consider it outside the porch. So, for example, I'm not, I don't know if I can zoom in here, but if you're just looking at this, take this end right here, the cover will go all the way to the corner, but we will have a post back three feet from the corner, so we'll cantilever our porch, that way there's a clear area, that, clear for, you know, easy for bicycles. There's one area that doesn't have that out in the front here, but we're going to make the porch large enough so that it will accommodate a bicycle as well. The other structures on site, there's only a couple, we, as I mentioned this here, we're going to add a play structure, it's probably just going to be an open swing set, we want to make sure that kids can have a little group area that the parents can go and monitor. At the same time, there was a beautiful little cupola on a barn that was formerly on this location, that we were requested to maintain and find a use for, and so we've designed a pergola that we're going to perch this cupola on, that'll have kind of an attractive appearance that, then again, the residents will be able to embellish. There will be a, we're going to add two benches to the site, just incidentally, one is here, and one will be out at the street, so that we can actually make it a little bit nicer for people coming to wait for the bus. Let me think, was there any other structures?
The third floor in the existing house, I mean, the attic, is that's part of, going to be part of the second-floor apartment?
Yep, the way we're dividing the existing building, is that there will be two apartments on the first level, and a stair up to the existing apartment on the second level, which will get modified slightly to accommodate the stair. That apartment currently already uses the third floor, and our current thinking is to not modify it, to just let that be, it's the same apartment that it is. There, oh, the last structures that we'll be adding is that each apartment gets their own little garden shed, just a tiny little shed, so we'll be able to actually, we're encouraging use of these gardens, and so, we're just hoping, we're hoping that these, all of these elements come together in a, in a lightful way for people. Again, you know, we're conscious of the character of the street, I mean, from my point of view as a restoration architect, South Street is extraordinarily close to Deerfield Main Street in terms of its stature, and we're very conscious of that. In fact, I would even push the city to go further and maybe consider a very strict historic district in this area. In fact, if you look at the layout of the street, originally it would have been a common street with two side roads and a center of grass, much more like Long Meadow. So, again, South Street is a really wonderful place, and we're conscious of that. One other thing I did want to say, we reached out to our neighbors, and one issue that we had determined is that the steep bank at the rear that's forested, debris falls down this bank. So, what we would like to do is put an interim fence, we're not going to create any more debris, but we just want to make sure anything incidental doesn't bother the neighbors. So, we're going to put a fence that then can be maintained and cleaned out now and again.
You're talking about tree debris, you're just talking about leaves and such?
He has, he showed us, there's actually things like pieces of concrete, that we don't know where they even came from, that somehow rolled down the hill, bricks, things like that. It's ridiculous, but again, we don't, we want to be good neighbors.
Say again where this fence would be?
So, the, I showed two locations, one right here, and would be down, we have to locate, we have to locate them based on trees.
Debris fence that's shown here.
Yep, yep.
Actually, I have a question about that.
Sure, sure.
Is there, are there any plans for a fence at the top of the property, before it has that almost vertical drop-off?
Yeah, it's.
It seems to me that having that adjacent to a playground is inviting disaster.
Again, I, you know, we'll certainly, that's something I think for the owners to consider, but I think we'd certainly listen to anything that you, you know, as a recommendation. Personally, I'm a very, very much a personal responsibility kind of guy, and I'm Huck Finn, I grew up with a slope like that, that made me the outdoorsman I am, so.
I could agree with that, except when it's a play, a playground.
Yeah.
Presumably, that's for kids.
Yep.
And it's a steep, steep drop-off there, as you know.
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, honestly, I don't think it poses a particular danger, because I think a person can't necessarily fall down the hill, but they could roll down it. I, you know, absolutely, we would consider any safety measures you deem necessary.
What is 11% of, 11% of the unit should be affordable, what does that mean?
That's your, that's the.
That's part of the special permit criteria.
That's your criteria.
Can you explain the emergency access for, what's that ground cover going to be, right side of the property?
Well, we, so when we talked to the fire department about it, we were saying, you know, we had uncovered a product, it's called turf protector, it's a mesh that you can add to grass surface that creates a very stable surface, and they said, no, we're fine on grass. This is, it's very compacted, it's been, this is a, it's been paved, and we're assuming that when we remove the paving, everything underneath is going to be really well compacted, and we will just make sure that our new material gets compacted.
Does the DPW have any requirements for, for that?
Well, the only issue with that is, I mean, they're right at their maximum allowed required open space, or minimums, I should say. So, they've, DPW has a concern that if that is used for overflow parking, then that will become compacted more and act like, you know, parking.
Right.
But in terms of an, so, and then calculations would have to be resubmitted for their stormwater management system, but in terms of the fire department, using that as emergency only, it's not going to affect that, because it will effectively be grass. I mean, they should probably do something more than try to grow grass on something that's been.
I'm talking about like what's under the grass, if it's, if it's, you know, two feet of loam, and the fire truck goes in five feet, it's going to sink. If it's under, if it's six inches of loam and underneath that is compacted gravel, or something that can, that can hold emergency vehicles, so I don't know if the DPW has requirements for that.
DPW doesn't, and in fact, most of the time, what we hear from the fire department is, they're going to address issues from the street, or from the parking lot. So, this is almost like a tertiary, they want, the big thing they wanted is to be able to take personnel around that side, to have a free and clear. to have a free and clear pathway, more than parking a vehicle. They typically, what I understand, is try not to park a vehicle between buildings.
You know, the chief was happy that we've brought the parking to where we did, because over on the left-hand side of the building, he believes that with hoses and whatnot, they have full access. But again, because the building is so long, it's, I've forgotten the figure, but around 110, 115 feet, we just felt ourselves that we would like to have access to both sides. And so when we recommended it to the fire chief, he said, absolutely, if you can, do it for me. Safety is important.
I see that you've submitted a letter from an engineering firm regarding traffic. Can you just talk us through that so that that's...
You know, I didn't write it, but I read it. And so what he's, his logic is that using the daily visits, based on the business and based on the residents, we're reducing the traffic on this site significantly. And that's just the summary. And it does seem to ring true.
The previous veterinary business.
Right.
Yep.
How about snow removal or snow storage?
Yeah, we've got, we're showing areas, and that's part of the grassy, you know, grassy protected area. We've got a large area for snow storage right here on site. We do have the ability to store snow on this side, but it's going to, what'll happen is, you see, sorry, I'll bring it forward here. This zone that I had showed you earlier where the chief would like to be able to park trucks, we'll keep that clear, which makes this area here the snow storage. And it, you know, and as you see, we have plenty of area to store snow.
So it would have to be like physically picked up from the parking lot area and moved to the other side of the building?
No, just planted.
No, they're just going to push it.
Oh, no, 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 no. This is for this snow over here. But we will maintain, see, the way that the chief mentioned it to us is that they can drive in six inches of snow, so we don't have to have a, you know, two- or three-inch snow call on that side of the building. The right-hand side of the building will have like a six-inch snow call, and the left-hand side of the building, I don't know, two-inch, three-inch?
One.
Maybe even one inch.
And on the left side of your drawing, where you have the snow storage?
Yep.
That's in front of the trash shed?
Yep, yep.
So is that, you're aware, I mean, that's a concern? Okay.
It's just, you know, that just means that we're going to be, you know, there'll be a little zone in front, shovel here.
Yeah, okay.
Other technical questions from the board?
Is there a secondary access for people who live in on the second floor?
There are no, okay, so, no, oh, I see what you're saying. No, the second-floor apartment has only one egress, but it does have its emergency egress. And plus, it has three balconies.
Tell me about the emergency egress. I don't see it on the elevation or the plans.
Emergency egress is the window size. You know, as per code.
Is the window size to the balcony?
Yeah, actually, some. There's multiple windows around the building, and we'll have three balconies off of the second-floor apartment. And I venture to say, most of the windows are on balcony.
Okay, so then, and how does a person get down from the balcony? Are there exterior staircases?
Well, no, no, this is just, the balconies are not means of egress escape. Well, I mean, they could be.
So what is the means of egress escape if there's a fire and I'm on the second floor?
Well, yeah, the window, but as is typical everywhere.
You just have to get out of the building. They don't have to give you stairs to get from the second floor down.
Is that right? On the previous hearing, why did they have them?
They haven't.
Why?
Well, maybe because that was commercial, I don't know. I don't know what the...
There are code requirements, and we are in a threshold that in our construction type, one egress is required. But we are actually, like I say, we want safety, so we actually were thinking about that, and that's one of the reasons we opted to make sure that there were balconies in each direction from the building, because that does make it easy to get.
Other technical questions from the board?
No, it's egress from the building.
Seems like a good time to open it up for public comment. So we are going to open this up for public comment. If you do have a comment on this hearing, please come to the podium and give us your name and your address.
Escape window.
And don't be shy. No comments from the public?
I'd like to...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm Amy Meltzer. I live on, I live across the street, just off the corner of South and Olive Street. This looks beautiful, so it really looks like an amazing addition to the neighborhood, and I really am grateful for your respect to sort of the view of South Street. I have one question that I just wanted to bring that really relates to both this project and the project that is proposed for the corner of Olive and South. I looked over the traffic, it makes sense, right? It makes sense for the total number, but I have concerns about the fact that this exit driveway is almost directly across from Olive Street, and if we have seven more, seven new, or six additional residences at peak time, turning, particularly turning left onto South Street, right, to go into North Hampton, plus an additional 12 units, which are much bigger than your unit, so probably, you know, debatable number of cars that we all have different opinions about, but I'm concerned about what's going to happen for the safety of people turning at that pinch point. We all know there've been, there's a lot of issues around congestion of South Street, and I'm just asking the planning board to consider that as the number of residents is increasing all around this one little area, and that all those people turning reminds me of some other really tricky intersections in North Hampton where there've been pedestrian fatalities and car fatalities. So I just want to bring it up, and I want to also thank you for going above and beyond the number of spots, because those of us who live near South Street know that there's already a problem with enough parking, so thank you for being mindful of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Discussion among the board?
I very much appreciate that comment, and one thing I'll just completely off-the-cuff just throw out to you is that because we have the bus waiting location, would it be appropriate to add a pedestrian crosswalk, which would have the effect of traffic calming?
I think that's probably, typically, we try to avoid what are called mid-block crossings, you know, when it isn't, you know, an actual intersection. You know, it may be something that the Transportation and Parking Commission would look at, I would think, but, you know, I think it's always a good thought to imagine crosswalks, but mid-block crossings tend to actually reduce pedestrian safety in many cases, so we'd want to just be really mindful of that. But, you know, I would think, I don't know what the process is, if we'll have ideas like that, if it gets submitted to the Transportation and Parking Committee on City Council, or if there's, if it's, you know, a suggestion that gets submitted to DPW, but I think, you know, yeah, we could certainly also look at speed limits in that area and where speed limits change, and maybe when, you know, there's an opportunity to kind of rethink that, we could take that into consideration.
We're just the planning board.
Transportation and parking would be the place to sort of initiate whether there's a demand for a crosswalk at the intersection, certainly not mid-block.
Right.
This, because there's a reduction in traffic generated to and from the site, it's going to be a lot less, fewer trips exiting, so there isn't any traffic mitigation required.
Question on the lighting, since the lighting plan that we have is not what they want to do, and they're also recommending low-level light bollards, which I don't have an issue with, but we don't have that in front of us, how do we condition that to give them enough leeway to do something within those?
So, I mean, the zoning stipulates what's allowed in terms of light levels, so as long as they're meeting that, I mean, if they show you on the plans where the lights are and they're not up there, and whatever they pick meet the zoning, then there shouldn't be an issue. You wouldn't need to create a condition or anything of that sort, except for potentially the color, because we don't have any color captured stipulated in the zoning. So if you just want to say...
So we can condition color.
Right, and then just say otherwise...
Light bollards aren't even shown, and while they might sense, it's one thing to condition, you show a light, just it's got to conform to zoning, but where they don't show a light but want to put a light?
Yeah.
And we're okay with putting, having them put a light. How do we, you know, how do we prevent them from circling the whole, you know, site with bollards, maybe two feet on center or something, which is not the intent?
Well, I mean, you can specify that there, you might want to find out more about, they would probably be behind each of those parallel parking spaces, and I don't know how much land is actually available to put in.
Do you envision one per spot that's in that location?
No, not even. No, we're conscious, so this is a funny thing, it's a very interesting, we don't, we'd rather have no lights, I suppose, and have flashlights for people, because we don't want to illuminate the neighborhood. So what we're thinking is that if, the balcony, the balcony is going to give us the light level on the building side, and in terms of the diagram, we think that we're going to, that will actually get us close at the far point of the parking lot. So we think these bollards are going to just be infill lighting along there, and there could be two, there could be three. We don't know until we get back from the tech.
So would you have an issue if we conditioned it up to four bollards on the...
Sure, yeah.
Side? To give you some leeway and whether it's two or...
Up to four, could be zero.
Yeah, I mean, it's a small area as well, there's not a lot of space between those parking spaces and the structure, so, and the ambient light may be enough that there's, that's not even required. I mean, maybe what you want to say is no parking lot lights, and if they decide they need some...
Well, this is, I mean, it's not a parking lot light, you know, 12-foot pole, it's a light bollard three feet tall.
Right, but you still have, I mean, that's right on the property line, so unless they're completely, I mean, you'd have to have full cutoffs on the rear so they don't spill over the lot line. And there is a house right on the other side of that alley keeper that drops down, and it comes right up next to that. It's not shown on this plan. So the, and I'm just looking at a picture of Google Earth, the windows for that first floor of the house come right, you know, a right parallel with those bollards. I can't remember if you're proposing a fence on that side.
We're not, but the area that the city took as right-of-way, about 10 feet wide, to the left of our property line, that's a vegetated area, and we'd like it to stay vegetated, and in fact, we would certainly even entertain negotiating with the city to say, hey, could we take it over again and maybe plant something that is a better buffer? Because again, we're very conscious of not wanting to light pollute the neighborhood.
I mean, they show two lights now, and you're not sure if that's going to be adequate or not, right?
Well, those were, so, here is the problem, when we were, when we were actually doing that, to be honest with you, she was on vacation, and I remember the discussion, we weren't sure if we were going to keep the existing light hole that is there. We didn't really want to do that. So I figured we'd better show it to you guys in case we need it so that we can take it off. But now, we're certain there won't be any light holes. We don't want that at all. So the ones that we showed are possible, probably, there's two of them shown, and it's possible that they, they would be the suitable locations for bollards. But again, we'll have to wait till our tech gets back to us, and we're happy, you know, I'm happy to bring this to Carolyn or anybody that would like to see it.
So how could we either condition that or process this without knowing? So what's shown in front of us are two full-blown parking lot lights, which the applicant doesn't want to use. So, and we're okay maybe with having them use light bollards if they're even needed. So how do we...
Could the bollards be an amendment? I mean, that would be...
Well, yeah, I mean, so, you're not going to be able to see this, but this is the Google Earth shot of the location. So there's a house right there with those two windows right next to the strip. That strip of land is for the purposes of transportation access down the hill to the river. So there's no guarantee that this landscaping would stay there on the city side of this strip of land. I think, I'm not sure, and that parking lot is not very big. I, again, would say you probably don't need parking lot lights when you have lights on the doorways of those units. So, you know, one thing you could say, do is stipulate that there are no surface lights, even take down what's existing and nothing installed, and then if they feel like they really need something, after, they can come back and show exactly where they want it, why they want it, and where the light's going to be.
Do you have an issue with that?
Could you say something like, they have to put in a fence if they put lights in the...
I think you want to see the fence. I think at that point, it's an amendment, and it should come back to the board, because we want to see that.
So we could make a condition now, no lights on that side. Is that the west side? I don't know what side that is.
Or just no lights in the parking area.
We're calling it west.
Right, on plan west, no lights on the west side of the parking lot, and then if you decide you need them, you come back.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yep. So are we going to get a new lighting plan, though? I don't...
I think only if, well, actually, I guess if the building lights...
We have that in production, but we don't have it.
Okay.
We will certainly supply.
I think for the building lights, they can just comply with zoning, and they don't get any relief from going anything different than what's allowed in the baseline zoning for by-right lights.
Okay. Because I'm wondering about that long walk from the parking lot to apartment number eight. That's all dark back there.
I mean, there will, there are lights over the entrances, so...
For each door?
Yeah.
Right. In the corners, is that...
I'm sorry?
In the corners of the balconies?
So, so there will be like, you know, there will be a light fixture for each door, you know, our typical code light, so you switch it, it's right, you know, adjacent to the door. But in addition to that, that's where we're talking about how outside of their actual porch area, we haven't determined yet whether it's a ceiling mount or a wall mount that's going to be in that, either on the beam or on the soffit to illuminate the parking area. So it'll be outside of the, outside of their private entry, but illuminating the public walkway and parking. And again, since we're, they had done, the diagram that you folks had, had had them located up at the eaves, and as soon as I saw that, I went, no, we're not floodlighting the balcony, it's not people's bedrooms. So once we move those lights down, our arc changed, and we're not certain we can get all the light level across. That's the only reason that we have the bollards even in play.
Were there other comments from DPW?
None that really are, you know, there's some water and sewer connection comments, but nothing that you would need to incorporate, other than just making sure that, you know, they want to press the point about not using that driveway for spillover parking, that the emergency access.
We're on board. There's going to be a sign, keep area clear.
So, I'm just looking at this, and I mean, I, that was my bet, so I have been in that parking lot. And I, I'm just wondering if it would make sense to put something, I mean, this is purely optional, but in the area that says snow storage, is there a way that you could put some sort of turnaround there? Because I just don't understand how you turn a car around in nine.
You know, that's why, to be honest, that's why we made an extra-large handicap striped zone, because we anticipate that is the backup turnaround for turnaround. On the right-hand side of the parking lot, look, and you'll see space with the handicap below that space. We've striped a large area so that it would be suitable for a turnaround space. Because we were in the same boat, we looked at it and thought, geez, how does somebody come and go?
So you turn into nine, and you back out, and you turn back, what?
It's the hatch space.
I think you don't get all the way, I mean, you can see if there's, if seven, eight, and nine are open, you can see if they're open, so you wouldn't...
Well, as a matter of fact, people would back into the snow storage area.
Probably, yeah. People take the easy route, of course.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was saying, I would imagine that you're going to have people driving on your grass, so I thought maybe you'd think about...
They're right at the limit, though, I think, on...
Right, there can't be any more impervious surface.
Right, so I don't think they'll want people backing onto the grass, that'll just become a mud lot. This is similar to across the street?
In my mind, it is similar across, I mean, the parking situation, you know, it doesn't...
Because I think that turnaround space will be used when a visitor comes or a guest comes, somebody will fill it up if all those other spaces are taken, and then perhaps you'll end up driving up there and then backing back out onto South Street, unfortunately, when that, when the people in number eight have a big party, you know, and all their friends come.
Only people without friends.
I may have missed the part about the garbage disposal, recycling containers, where are those placed?
So that's what this shed structure is for here, and they will have bins inside them, and we haven't designed the doors yet, but we're imagining either, you know, sliding doors or openable doors.
Oh, that outline of the box, okay.
Yeah, right here at the top of the bank. There is a drawing, there's a drawing of it in another sheet. of it in another sheet that, uh.
And then how will the trucks access that in order to pick up the garbage?
Well, it depends. If it's pedal people, then they're, they're just, uh, you know, that's the size that they'd use. If it's the, if it's the, uh, what do you say, if it's a recycling vehicle, they're going to have to back in and just access it.
And that grassy area that we don't want people backing into.
Well, they would back up close to it.
Well.
Is there room for the, the garbage shed?
So is it a dumpster? Is it a dumpster or the can?
So it's this thing right here. So if you plow all the stuff.
Covered bins.
Going to get to that.
It's designed for you. So we would really design it for use for the truck, but I think it could be figured out with the truck if you changed your mind, I think.
Is there a condition that can be proposed, George?
I, I don't think you can condition that they will use pedal people.
Yeah.
Although pedal people would love that.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, any other comments from the public?
I'm sorry, I, I missed your comment because there was a couple of things.
Oh, yes, no, we're fine. Yes, we were all talking over each other. We shouldn't. There's one more comment from the public?
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I, I believe you addressed this. I did read through stuff. There were like 25,000 documents and I'm, I have no expertise in this, but I did know from studying parking lots that there's generally a condition with a special permit that you can't have five consecutive spaces. And I, I believe that was addressed, but I didn't understand and has precedent. I'm just, just want to inquire about the five consecutive spots, which I understood was not allowed by the special permit, so.
We, we didn't address that, except in the text, we did address it. And it, it's simply a function of the fact that we've got so little land area, that we don't have the ability to create a large, um, break for any kind of vegetation. And the other thing that's a little difficult is that in this small area, any break or curbed break would really make it difficult to maintain and plow. So, um, I don't know, that's, we had talked about that earlier, but not, not tonight.
So this is one of those cases where, you know, the developers made a trade-off to have the additional space. And it seems like that's useful for the size of the, the project? I don't necessarily, I mean, I kind of caught that as well, that there are six consecutive spaces. Um, I think it probably is, is a worthwhile use to have the number of spaces that you do have without giving up, you know, or giving up the turnaround to kind of shift something and have a break. But I don't know if other folks have concerns or comments.
May I make, I'll tell you why we did it. The, the existing ramp lands in such a way that, that our turnaround striped area would get you right to the end of the ramp. We now know because, having, having talked to our electrician, we are, by the way, we are burying our power. But when we bury the power, we have to remove the ramp to bury the power. So right now, um, the McCons are in negotiation, trying to figure out if this will be an accessible apartment or not. We've designed it physically that it can be. It may not rent that way early, um, but we will have the ability to bring the ramp back if we ever needed to. That's the reason that we located it there. Secondly, that further back, because we wanted to make sure that those fur ba, farther back spaces would have the ability to use the turnaround. But we would perfectly, we would be happy to, um, pull that forward if possible. It wouldn't, it would monkey around with our ramp, but, uh, we could pull that turnaround forward so that we were at the five spaces.
Um, I'll, I think maybe if you go to the landscaping plan, you've added a, um, landscaping between the sidewalk and the parking. Otherwise, the parking layout that exists now isn't being maintained. So it's not a new parking lot that's being created.
Right.
Um, but, um, you've added some landscaping to the front, which is not there before, which creates a little bit of a screen to that parking.
And, um, and I just want to, we've dealt with this in the past. When people back out, those lights are not going to go into the, the neighbor's property, like into their bedroom?
What do you mean? People aren't allowed to back out onto South Street.
Coming out front ways.
It's, it'd be illegal for them to back out onto South Street. So that's why they have to be turned, they have to turn around. So I guess the, the, what Carolyn's bringing up is that there's, there is some screening so that a person driving past the site is not seeing six parking spaces uninterrupted, you know, straight from the front back. So the question is, are there, are there concerns with that current layout? Or is everybody okay with that?
So, um, my concern, I guess, is with, there's no internal sidewalk, right?
Well, the ramp functions as one. Um, and when it's gone, there will, there will be a continuous sidewalk from the street all the way to, to the rear at unit eight.
And then what prevents the cars from enroaching on the sidewalk?
Well, we haven't, we're not sure whether it's going to be a Cape Cod berm or stops, but we could, we could institute something.
Right now, there's nothing on the plan. Somebody could just pull a big truck, your truck, would probably eat up that whole space and back into the balustrade like the Calvin Theater or the balcony.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't back up because that's illegal.
One of our thoughts is to have different materials. We had, we didn't, we're just starting to talk about that today, but we didn't finish talking about it. One possibility is to make the sidewalks concrete and then the bituminous on the parking, which would also create a visual barrier. But again, we're, we're in discussion as to whether it's going to be a Cape Cod berm at the edge or whether we need curbing. Now, we know that we are, that there's a requirement or at least a request to make sure that we don't allow people to drive over this grass in the front. So we're going to add curb there. But we hadn't determined what to do with the sidewalk. So absolutely, listen, we would understand your concerns and.
So I think we have, I, I don't know what to condition, but there needs to be something that says there will be some kind of impediment.
Some delineation, either a curbing or wheel stop.
Right.
And leave it.
We don't have a lot of room, though.
Be nicer.
So some kind of curbing or wheel stop between the parking.
Parking and sidewalk.
Long-term, I can't say if the planters would be maintained and. This, these are townhouses. It's a combination townhouse. So there's not an association at all involved in this.
It's all rental, yeah. It's all rental units. So just to recap.
Well, we don't know that.
Well, I mean, I guess you could decide to send them all office condos at some point. Yes.
It's not the, it's not the current intent, but you're right.
Right.
So current conditions, um, just as a kind of recap, just.
Well, I have one other thing if we're onto this. Um, I, I think there should be a fence back there by the play area. I don't normally think we should get into.
I'm surprised, Alan.
Yeah, right. Well, just show them flexible. But it's immediately adjacent to the play area, which is required by the ordinance. And I think it can be implied that it needs to be a safe play area. And I don't think it's safe to be right next to a, a almost vertical drop-off. And it's not a big deal. They could put a fence starting with the tree there. So to the end of the property that would cover all the grass and play structure area.
Excuse me, would, would you be amenable to, um, prohibition planting, you know, like low R providee or something that would also keep people from going over, over to the edge?
I guess that would probably suffice if they were tight enough.
There's a lot of plants on the slope as well. I've been over there with my own children quite a few times. And if you fell, you wouldn't get very far. It's, it's shrubby. So, I mean, then there's trees off, all the way down. So it's definitely not like, it's steep, but it's not like falling off of the edge of a cliff. It's more like.
You, you also mentioned that there is going to be a fence about five feet down in order to stop debris from going down?
Probably halfway down. And it'll be a very low fence, like maybe a thirty-inch.
debris fence.
Yeah, just a debris fence, like a, almost like a snow fence, a small, uh.
Like a toddler-sized debris. Event of it.
Yeah. Well, uh, you know, maybe.
A four-foot stockade fence would keep kids from falling down there.
I'm wondering if the visually, if visually, um, how would you feel if we, if we took our lower fence that we're proposing and pulled it up slope? So that right now, you see, we've got it way down the slope. This drop is, I don't know what it is off the top of my head, sixty, seventy feet. It's pretty, it's pretty long. What if, what if that, you see how I've located one over in here? What if that continued along so that it's like maybe ten feet from top of slope? So that we can, so that visually, we're not looking at the fence, but it would stop people from going?
I guess that would probably take care of my concern, as long as it continued to the end of the property line.
Yeah, I think that maybe, maybe that's a good solution because it will also be our debris fence. So as long as it's over the edge of the slope.
So you would collect debris and little kids.
Right. Any momentum.
Little people don't pick up little.
Just to clarify with Carolyn, so we would condition that, we would make.
If you want that as a board as a condition that you.
How do other folks feel about that?
Makes sense.
Can we call it a toddler fence on the condition?
Breaking new ground here, toddler fencing. Maybe modify the zoning. Um, so that would be a condition, then, that the, the debris fencing be continued? So would that be, would you stick with the, the five foot or go down to the two foot on the other side of the existing tree?
So I, I would, you know, by your recommendation, but here, so maybe what we would do is where we say approximate location of five-foot fence, I don't, I'm not certain that that one even needs to be five feet.
Yeah.
So maybe what we do is this location seems to be more of an appropriate location after this, tonight's discussion. So maybe that fence extends to property line. And maybe you just tell me how, how high you think would be safe. Is, is thirty inches enough?
Pretty tall.
Three feet?
Yeah.
If you're wrong. What do other folks think?
Thirty-six inches?
Yeah, at least thirty-six inches.
Would that be visible from the, that wouldn't, okay. So continuation of fence to property line, entire fence at thirty-six inches in height. Uh, other recommended conditions were prior to any start of construction, tree protection measures shall be installed for the trees that are saved along the front end of the property. Fencing shall be chain-linked at the drip line. Tree protection shall be inspected by the city. Uh, all, we mentioned this earlier, all exterior lighting would meet zoning requirements and be no cooler than 3,000 K in temperature. Prior to final CO, a final lighting as built shall be submitted, showing compliance with those standards. And no surface lights will be permitted on the site. So if you were to come back, um, no parking will be designated on the east side of the building. You've already mentioned that. Uh, no spillover parking on that east side of the building. Uh, and that curbing or wheel stops be included between the parking spaces and the sidewalk. Um, and then last, any other conditions or comments provided by DPW? Does anybody have, I'm sorry?
There weren't any.
And there weren't any. Uh, anybody else have other, anything else I left out?
Well, I guess I'm just a little bit concerned about the, the garbage disposal. I'm sorry to bring that up, but it becomes an unsightly thing in many larger, you know, group homes where it is a big dumpster afterwards. Maybe it isn't. And I think eventually it would just be kind of rolled out into the parking lot and perhaps take up a parking space. It happens quite a bit. Um, but it seems like, and a truck won't back up into where it's proposed right now because of the grass. So they're not going to roll around those dumpsters out to the grass. So I'm wondering if that doesn't need to be in a paved area, um, the recycling and, because down the road, um, people won't just be using the buckets. It may go to a larger kind of dumpster routine.
Well, what you can say is that no dumpsters are approved for the plan because then, then if you do have the rollouts, they can always roll them out to the street and the truck can come by just on the street. There, I don't know if they do that on South Street, but there are many neighborhoods where you have to bring your.
Yep.
Out to the street anyway with the roll-up. So you could just stipulate that no dumpsters are, are allowed.
The truck just go and back up all the way.
Well, the trucks don't back up typically because if they're getting a dumpster, they have the front loading fork. So they would have to go in and then back out. That's what I'm saying. If there's no dumpster, they're not going to need to go in and do that. They have to roll it to the street.
And I guess the good thing is that there is more, there are more parking spaces than would be required here. So if in the future, they wanted to have a dumpster and wanted to have it on a paved area and give up a parking space, by the calculations, they could afford to lose a parking space to some.
But they would also have to come back to the board if that was a condition. So then you would see that.
So I would be comfortable with a no dumpster condition if other folks are comfortable with that. Um, public comment is still open, so I would entertain a motion.
We move to close.
Second, Sam, Mark, Mark. All those approve? All those opposed? Uh, any other comments before?
Did you mention the condition in there about the, uh, the, the parking and the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yep, curbing or wheel stop between the parking and sidewalk would be required. Have we hear a motion?
I'll move that, um, special permit and site plan for partial demolition, reconstruct and to convert veterinarians slash residential use to a residential in 27th South Street map, thirty-eight B, seventy-three, uh, including the conditions to review.
Mark, second. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And we do have some additional business. Thank you.
How many A and Rs?
Oh, okay. There are no A and Rs tonight.
Or at worst.
We do have some additional business. So if you wouldn't mind speaking in the hallway, uh, do you want us to do the Service Net course?
Sure.
Um, we do have some additional business regarding exterior facade changes to the Service Net building. Um, Sagan?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Carolyn to explain what the changes are and then we'll have public comment on that.
I have to recuse myself from that discussion because the arch tech is a tenant in our building.
Oh.
And, and I'm not sure if I need to recuse myself. I own two properties on that, on Edward Square.
In where?
On Edward Square.
No, it's not Edward. It's, uh, it's Village Hill.
This is Village Hill. Just trying to get out of that, Sam.
Try, Sam.
So there's a question, you all approved a plan for Service Net building. There's an element from the facade, of the facade that hasn't been installed yet. And so they're asking not to install it. Um, so here's the issue. So it could either, it's definitely not a staff level review for an amendment because it's more than just a minor administrative change. Um, there are other, two other thresholds. One could be that you all can make a decision and decide that it's an administrative planning board, um, adjustment or determine that it's really rises to the level of needing a, a site plan amendment because it's a design change or for whatever reason, if you think it needs more public discourse. So if you think it's of administrative character and you want to, um, weigh in on it, um, tonight, you can make that decision as a board. Um, and if not, then you would just simply be saying, this is significant enough that it warrants of, you know, an amendment, which means that an application would be submitted with rationale provided as to why they want the change. It gets advertised, we notify the abutters, and then you hold the public hearing on the amendment.
Well, it's a fair, it is a fairly significant change to the facade. So, you know, having read through it, I mean, I would be comfortable if we had a discussion tonight and decided that it would be administrative, but I, I could also see the merit in having, you know, having an applicant come back and have it be noticed. And, um, you know, particularly for people on Hospital Hill who are following the process and the application and were expecting the building to look a certain way for various reasons, including sustainability, then, you know, there may be significant public input, um, that we would want to hear. How are other folks feeling, having read it?
I'm more about having a public hearing. Because I think the comments here, they come out with, I think, initially I thought, well, maybe not. But then I, I read the accommodations here. Um, and, um, based on these, these, these points that were happening here in the design and sustainability, I think you should have a public hearing for that.
So they're just getting rid of this fin thing, right? And they want to make it uniform with the other building?
That is the bill, the, so what you received in your staff report was what the original simulation was plus, and then what the existing condition is without the added. simulation was, plus, and then what the existing condition is without the added element.
So the purpose of it, it's, it's both a design element and an energy reduction element, because it's a shade fence, it's designed to help cool the building, reduce energy use.
And then you also...
If they don't build it, then they have less of a carbon footprint, because they don't actually have to use the materials?
I think we, I think probably that, that probably wouldn't be the case, I think over the lifespan of the building, I think it probably would pay for itself, but that would be, you could probably do the math on that.
And then just to be, I don't know if everybody received it, we did receive a memo with justification for why ServiceNet wants to leave these off, I don't know if everybody was able to receive their email today, and so that's out there as well.
Yeah, I read both, right? And quite frankly, aesthetically, I always drive by, and I like the way it is. But then when you start to discuss the sustainability, the designing, basically the sustainability, if you are committed to carrying on that sustainability on their design, if they're not doing, and that's something that really fulfilled that kind of a, I don't know if it was a requirement, right? But if they don't have it, and it has to do the sustainability discussion, I think it should open to the public, that's what I think.
But, so this is a question, so if we, I mean, if they say, listen, we don't want to do this, and we know it's part of our design, we have to make them put these fins, I mean, are they getting some sort of, have they gotten money from the city for, for building a environmentally friendly property?
It was something we considered during the application.
You approved a project.
We approved the plan, you know, this was one of the factors that we considered, so that's why it's coming back to us now. It's not just sort of like we're using gray brick instead of...
No, no, I get that, I understand that, I'm just...
So we could say, we could decide right now that it's not a big deal, and that of all the things that we considered when we permitted the project, that this was a minor consideration, but we could review the minutes and say that sustainability and, and energy use of the building was a major consideration, and that's the question, so that would sort of guide us towards determining...
I understand your question, that these fins, for lack of a better term, were built into the cost estimates from the get-go, because that was what approved, and I know from that, and then the subcontractor around the window and the fins just wasn't able to produce them at a given time, and now it's come up that they're perhaps not relevant.
Got it, okay.
But it's not a new cost theoretically.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think, go ahead, Mark, oh, no, you're recused.
Yeah, I have a number of thoughts. First of all, I mean, we would have approved it initially, at the outset, even without these fins. I mean, nobody would have said, we're turning this project down unless you put fins on the windows, so they've decided after the fact not to put them on, and that personally doesn't bother me. Looking at the building now, first of all, I think, given the number of trees they've planted in front of it, in a few years, you'll barely be able to see the building, and the presence or absence of these fins will be unremarkable, will be not noticeable. In addition, looking at the fins that they started to install, just on the one corner, they, they put some on and then stopped, there's a couple of things. First of all, they don't appear to be similar to what's shown here. I don't know which way that cuts, but the fins, as they've started to put them on, are really barely noticeable, because they're parallel to one of the lines on the windows, the existing windows have a horizontal line, and the fins are on that same horizontal line. I had to look two or three times before even locating, so it's not going to make much of a difference one way or the other to the appearance. The other thing is, the point that Carolyn makes about the design guidelines requiring the blinds not be used in buildings or be discouraged, I think that's kind of crazy. I mean, to tell people that they can't pull their blinds down, because the public has to be able to see into where they're working, and that's not true of other buildings on Hospital Hill. People pull their blinds down, the Focio building is right at ground level, people pull their blinds down. I don't understand that at all. And as far as sustainability, based on the letter that we got from the architect, it is a very sustainable building. They've added solar panels, so they're, they have a very small footprint. Now that is, I guess it's a substitute in effect, perhaps, by the fins, but to me, it's just not a big deal, and I don't see the point of going through a whole public hearing on it.
I have to agree with Alan, I think that, now, I mean, I just don't see, I mean, one of the, no, I, I'm sorry, I was not in front of a computer at all today, so I did not read, read these emails, but, you know, I just don't see how, you know, I'm just reading this, analysis shows commercial buildings are responsible for 52% of our carbon load, more than any other sector. I mean, what commercial buildings not, I mean, that's just like this massive pile of, I mean, that's including...
It's globally in Northampton. We had a study for Northampton that said it, for Northampton, here is the breakdown of where our carbon loads are, and 52% of that is coming from commercial buildings versus residential versus transportation.
I understand that.
That's what that's...
That's like including the, that's including the bus station, which has buses out of it, and that's including, that's including the gas station, that's including a bunch of things that have, that, like, commercial, commercial doesn't, like, that still doesn't, that's like such a huge category.
I think the relevance is that this is a commercial building that we permitted, and so this is the board that has responsibility for trying to ensure that the same considerations that were important to us when we permitted it are met consistently throughout the entire project, so that's the key here.
I guess the question, are we, are we, they're going to come, like, I mean, if we feel they need to come, then they need to come, but we're going to say yes, because in the grand scheme of things, it's not a big deal, and so...
I mean, we can decide that, that's what we're talking about. This is why we're having this conversation, it's, you know, it's our purview to say, we may say no.
We may say no.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what we have to decide, you know, because what we can't do is say, you can't use any more energy, you know, but taking away this feature that could potentially reduce energy use on a brand-new development versus a renovation of an existing building, you know, this is a brand-new development that's already used up, you know, quite a lot of material and energy, so that's the real question, is how, how important was this consideration when we first permitted it? And is that important enough to, say, maintain the original plan that we approved?
Yeah, I think, as I say, given that what was pointed out by the architect, that they've installed full solar panels that weren't part of the original design, makes me feel it's, given that fact, as well as many others, it's hard for me to imagine us saying required to install these, this one element that isn't really needed anymore.
Sir, I read the architect first, I said, oh, it would be very easy to go, but then I, I saw the comments in here, and I'd rather go with the city's comments and decide over it and have a public hearing in it, because otherwise...
I'm reminded of a hearing about a month ago, when a developer of a large subdivision came in, and there was a mandate for him to do affordable housing, and he just put it off, and put it off, and put it off, and a lot of people, rightfully so, said, listen, you put this as a condition years ago, and now you're letting him slip away, so I think there's a precedent to if we provide these certain regulations, conditions on projects, and somebody doesn't do them for a number of years, and then comes back to us. So there's a piece there that they agreed to. That was a major requirement to include affordable housing at Emerson Way, and that, that was a trade-off for getting it approved originally, as opposed to one of a thousand design elements here.
So...
I guess, I hear what you're saying, but I don't think it's the same.
So from a sort of procedural perspective, we have members of the public here, is the public comment open? Do we take comments from the public?
It's up to you, you can, if you'd like.
I mean, it seems, there are folks who maybe want to make some comments that might help us get the conversation forward.
I think it might make sense to have a few comments, I would be leery of having a long back and forth, because that's what a hearing is for. So, and then I just do want to make one statement, I wouldn't assume that the board would have approved it without, there was lots of discussion with this building about breaking up the massing along 66, and the reason why the design guidelines would talk about shading and windows is for those public, street-facing buildings on, on major streets, it's not just about every building.
So we will hear from the public if anybody would like to make a comment, keeping it brief?
So I'm Bruno Calero, from ServiceNet, 21 Orlando Drive, that's actually up there, and I know you've received the emails from the architect, and I worked with him, I helped build the project with him throughout the whole process. When we put in the first fin on one side, it was something that we put in, and we immediately didn't like the aesthetics of it after living in the building with the full windows and seeing the view. With that said, we have put in blinds that are energy efficient, that help with the heat and the cold, we have put those in, because even with the fin that's even currently there, and even prior to that, there was glare on the surfaces of the screens and everything else, and the architect was actually the one that recommended us put in shades on that whole side of the building, due to the fact that the sun comes up. So during the day, in certain parts of the day, the shades are coming down, and we have gone to measures of putting solar up on the building to try to keep energy efficient up. We have smart lighting throughout the whole building with LED to try to keep efficiency and sustainability as much as possible. So the fins are something that aesthetically, from our point of view, and having, living in the building, from the outside, it's hard to see, but when you're actually in the building and you're looking out, it is something that you notice. And with the shades down during the day, and having the energy efficiency, when they do go up, because the sun is passing in the afternoon, it is a beautiful view to be able to see out. So that's kind of, you know, the reason that we put a halt to it and stopped, and asked them to stop and decided to come here and ask for the permission to take it down. And I will also say that Mass Development, who also has purview over the site, they have approved us to not put that in, so that's my comment.
And just a quick question, when you decided to install the blinds, did you know that that was in opposition to the design guidelines?
No, I mean, I would have expected the architect to tell us that, but that was something that was in the plans from day one out of our original, you know, building to building, that we knew we were going to have the sun glaring there, and we also had solar ban, which he listed in his, in his email, as another layer of protection, of sustainability that we added to the building, so.
Thank you.
And I do have documents for the solar stuff in case, for the shades, in case you want to review it, the last bit of the thing.
Making them come back is mixed, just is going to push this two, two weeks? I mean, are they, can they...
Oh, a month, there are more.
I mean, is stopping them from doing business?
No.
No, they've been in the building.
Right, it would just give the public an opportunity to, it would improve our transparency and give us a chance to review any other calculations or any other data that can be provided. Where are you leaning, George?
Where am I leaning?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's too much for me, and again, I wasn't here for the initial discussions, but to make an administrative kind of decision on it. I would, I'm mixed, I think, you know, I can appreciate what Alan said, I too went over there and I parked across the street at the Keel Lot, and I looked at the trees, and again, they're not going to be massive oak trees, but they do break up that slope quite a bit, you know? But, you know, I think the, the larger question was, all of those plans were, of the fins were put into kind of an energy formula, so even though there's hearsay, so to speak, that employees feel that they're, they're still, they're saving energy and these, this and that is happening, there's no data to show that, you know, they're offsetting what the fins would bring to the, the energy kind of output. I think I'm leaning towards, again, opening up probably to a public hearing and getting more information myself on it.
Yuri, where are you leaning?
Open for them, yeah.
Sam?
I think it could be solved tonight.
Alan?
I'm okay with the way it is.
With the proposal?
Yes.
Yeah. Something comes down to me. I mean, I, I mean, personally, I would feel more comfortable if, if this went to public hearing, you know, just for transparency's sake. I think having remembered this application, that energy considerations were significant, that that was, this is brand-new development, but I could be persuaded to... Not do that, I guess, I mean, you're like, please, don't do that.
Yeah, I can't.
I think you do.
Yeah. I feel like it wasn't important, you know, that there's a difference between, you know, if we were to say something else, like, raise the temperature in the building to 70 degrees...
I don't think it hurts. I don't, I mean, it will not hurt to have more meeting, I just also think that meetings sometimes does hurt a little bit.
I mean, you know, my concern is, you know, is, again, that all of the Hospital Hill development, you know, we have typically had a number of members of the public come, and people are looking at it, and they're looking to make sure that the, the things that we are considering when we approve these projects are, you know, that we aren't reneging on, you know, that are deciding later that things that were important are not important, so...
I think we should have the meeting, I think we should have this thing in the future, so it's three, done.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd make, I move to have a meeting extra long, to go over the fins.
Has to start after 10 o'clock.
So submit for a public hearing?
Yes.
Amendment, official amendment.
Yes.
I'll second.
Seconds, all those in favor? Opposed? Alan, you're opposed.
Yep. Good, they weren't all unanimous decisions.
Yeah, exactly.
Always good. That's the only reason I voted against it.
Oh, you make it to think about it.
So meeting will be...
I don't know.
Alright, so applicant will submit a permanent amendment, and it'll get scheduled onto our next debate hearing.
So then we just have...
Sorry, Mark, I'm sorry that, I should have done minutes first for you.
I can make a motion to approve those.
Well, there are not.
There's like a couple tiny typos. Would you want us just call them out?
Really? Oh, that feels terrible. Could you make a motion with a condition, spelling errors in the August 9th?
For TESS's, I move to approve the minutes of May 24th, June 14th, June 28th, July 26th, and August 9th, with TESS's recommended edits, word smithing.
It's just June 28th and August 9th. There's a fragment.
Usually Carolyn messes up, so you probably missed some.
You know who's doing the minutes next?
There is no ANR, so there could be another motion that I'll entertain.
There's no NR.
A and Rs, we had A and Rs and others, but...
I moved to...
Alan, you second, are you second?
Yeah.
Sam seconds? All those in favor? Those opposed?